Good evening and welcome to the May 15th Athol Royalston Regional School Committee Meeting, here at Royalston Community School. First order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we move forward, just announce to you that you are being taped this evening for playback on AOTV and also for posting to our district website. The approval of minutes for April 10th, is there a motion?
I need questions for the [inaudible].
There's a [inaudible]. Motion made in second. Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, extensions. Give me two seconds here.
Yes.
Okay, public input. Is there any public input on there?
There is not.
There is not, okay. Thank you. Student representative report, please, here. Okay. Recognition, school committee, start with Nancy.
I have none for tonight, thank you.
So I'd like to thank Beth Craven for keeping us aware of what's coming on here at the Royalston School. Also, my congratulations to Sheen Cleveland and the entire staff down at the Athol at ACES for the great job they've been doing. The report says a lot about that upcoming. The change, I'll talk a little bit more about it later, but to have a change in leadership and be able to maintain the progress that they've made with some of the changes they are speaking very highly to the government. To keep that going, you know, with a change is not an easy thing to do. You deserve a lot there.
Mitch?
I want to recognize the central office staff, the superintendent, the business manager, the director, all the central office staff who did, I think, a great job of all the school buildings on Teacher Appreciation Day and getting to all the classrooms and tell the teachers and their professionals how much we appreciate what they're doing with the kids each and every day.
I have none this evening. Dale?
I'd like to commend the parents of the seniors and school community volunteers that put on such a nice drug and alcohol-free prom party.
Yep. All right. At this time, the school committee would like to make a presentation if we could have Mr. Dale Uji come up.
Dale, it's keys to [inaudible]. Keys to [inaudible].
Ken's guy.
Keys to Ken's guy.
Ken's guy.
Tonight, we're here to honor Dale Uji for his work on the school committee. I personally want to say thank you. When I arrived here last year, Dale was one of the first people to sit down with me and really get me to understand and know the community of Athol and Royalston in a very positive and enlightening way. I also was impressed with his physical fitness. After we left my meeting, he said he was doing a 250-mile bike ride, I believe is what he did.
I haven't done it yet.
Yeah. But really close, and so I just want to thank him for his support of me and the school district in the capacity of school committee member. Thank you very much.
Dale, on behalf of the Athol Royalston Regional School Committee, I'd like to present you with this public service award in recognition of exemplary public service as a member of the Athol Royalston Regional School Committee and appreciation of the honor which you have brought to the community as a leader for public education. Thank you. Feel free to stay for a minute.
Let's take for a minute.
Student of the Month. We can start with RCS, Post School.
One kiss. I'd like to introduce Chance Parsons. His two teachers nominated him, but unfortunately, they're away at sleeping in a cabinet in nature's classroom this week, so they wrote a letter and I'm going to read it. It was with great pleasure that the fifth, sixth grade team had RCS nominate Chance Parsons as Student of the Month for Royalston Community School. Mrs. Cogliello and Mr. Snell both agree that Chance represents the positive things that come from hard work, good behavior, and perseverance. His improved work can best be seen in Chance's strong improvement in his written work and class participation. His good behavior is best exhibited when he helps others, whether it be peers in class or reading with his kindergarten buddies during library. Chance has shown perseverance in remaining positive and moving forward through some personal challenges this year. He has done a wonderful job with the drama department for the past two years. This past year, he was Oz in The Wizard of Oz, and it was his idea that when the curtains opened to show Oz that Mr. Snell's face be there. That was a great addition. He has a wonderful sense of humor. He loves to read. He always has a book in his hand, even at the Red Sox game that was passed two weeks ago, and he has turned into a fine young man who we are so proud to send off to arms. Congratulations and continued great work and success in the future. Back here. Where? Here you go, Chance.
ACES?
I have my student here, I don't have my certificate. Oh, do you have it? Perfect. It's all here. So this is Nathan, a kindergarten student at ACES, and this is Mrs. Fritschfield, one of his teachers who nominated him, so I'm going to let her do the introductions.
Nathan Bernard is a kindergarten student in Miss Fairby's class. If I were to choose one word to describe Nathan, it would be joyful. His positive attitude towards life is infectious. Nathan spreads happiness wherever he goes. Anyone who crosses Nathan's path is welcomed with a smile, an enthusiastic wave, and the greeting of "Hi." Nathan has concern and compassion for his classmates. When a student is absent, he goes out of his way to let me know by bringing me to the students' empty cubby. Nathan is fun-loving and kind like me. He loves to sing. Working with Nathan is an absolute joy. So Nathan, this is for you. [inaudible].
Building on the theme of spreading happiness, I'm very pleased that it's Evan Malloy and Emily Parsons that the arms seem so much bigger. So, whether it's a busy morning, I'm tired, and Harry inevitably, these two girls make me smile because Emily will do this to me. I find it every day, no matter where I am. So thank you for that. Turns out Emily went to Royalston. She said that coming into it, she had some nice memories here. And Evan, I met as a fifth grader. I remember one day, I'll never forget this story, every time I hear the word, I think of this. "Where'd you get the name from?" And she said, "Yeah, when I was four, my mother said I was a little piece of crap." I thought, "Beautiful story to get a name from." So, thank you for all that you do, the morning announcements, the pledge of allegiance, making this one.
Show it, girls.
High school?
Yeah, gotta turn those certificates around. All I gotta do is clap. There we go.
Athol High School Student of the Month is Senior Jaden LeBlanc. Jaden is not here tonight, he's actually fulfilling his community service hours so he can graduate this coming June. Jaden's being recognized for his determination. School has never come easy to Jaden. He's persevered through a lot of challenges and struggles, and we're proud of him because he's going to be graduating with his class on time. So, he's being recognized for being the most improved student from when he was a freshman to when he graduates this coming month. So, it's with great pride that we recognize Jaden LeBlanc.
Southwest Scholar Athlete?
So, once again, we've recognized two athletes as our Scholar Athletes of the Month. I'll talk about our high school athlete who could not be here, she has a softball game up in Pittville tonight, Lindsay LeBlanc, who also won it last year as a middle school student. She plays three sports at the high school and has a 3.98 GPA. Lindsay LeBlanc is our first recipient. Representing the middle school is an individual who has played three sports this year. He played football in the fall, he wrestled in the winter, and he did outdoor track this past spring. He's a staff who's worked hard both on the field and in the classroom with an 87.5 GPA. Our Southwest Scholar Athlete of the Month for the middle school for the month of April is Randy Reed.
And Staff Member of the Month.
Very pleased to introduce you, some of the, I'm sure now, Ms. Eileen Allen, as the Staff Director of the Month. And this, Allen and I ran parallel, parallel lives for a couple decades. I was a teacher at the high school, you were at the middle school. We met at meetings, always a great professional. Great [inaudible] to five years now, same professional all the time, great asset to our school. In a not-so-easy system of data collection and analysis, Ms. Allen is the first. Her students score the highest in math tests for achievement in our building. So it's a credit to her and her [inaudible]. Congratulations.
Before we continue on the agenda with unfinished business, Beth, can you expand? Do you have any presentations?
Yeah, it's just a quick video. I just wanted to welcome everyone to Royalston. It's been almost a year that I started here, and this picture was taken right before school started, the PTO put on the top of a party for back to school, and I was just amazed at the turnout. Everybody always tells me that they can feel kindness and love when they come into school, and I certainly felt it when I interviewed, and I still feel it these days. And the little video montage we put is not a date, it's kind of the year, and a lot of it has to do with some of just the extras that we do with students, and part of it is describing RCS in one word and one thing you learned this year. And the voices are kind of soft, but we put the words on the screen too, so enjoy.
Graphs, telling time, multiple time and area, and [inaudible]. Fractions. Fractions. Multiplication and division. Divis and division. To be kind. Kindness.
How to make friends. Sportsmanship and friendship. To be kind. Friendship.
And all the teachers work together to make it on the big campus.
How to make learning fun. Teamwork makes the dream work.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, under unfinished business, who made a presentation?
So at the last school committee meeting, I presented to you an overview of the district's benchmark data and walkthrough data for the year, and as promised at that meeting, we're going to look at individual schools data today, and the principals are going to come up and present that data for their individual schools. You gonna click it for me? Oh, I can click it for you. Okay. All right, all right, all right. So, I'm just going to go over some data points. I know a little bit later in the agenda, I'm going to talk a little bit more about ACES in terms of our feedback from our AIR report. So this is our kindergarten data. I think you've seen how this data is set up before, but we have it in the three benchmarks as beginning skills, progressing, which means they acquired some of the skills, but maybe not all that we would like them to have, and needing. So these are our two kindergarten benchmark tests, the DIBELS and the GATES, and this is our scores from spring 2019, and I see that Molly made a little notation that. It was collected early so we could identify some areas where we still want to, before they go into that first grade mode, some areas that we might need to address. This is our reading achievement, and there is, on the left-hand side is our fall benchmark data, and on the right-hand side, and this is for reading, is our spring data. The graph at the bottom shows by grade level, grades one, two, three, and four, and the little rhombus is marking where our projected growth was. So based on that first round, where was our projected growth? And the shaded rectangle underneath is where our students are at this point. So you can see, we've met our intended growth for the year. Our grade three team is really to be commended in reading because they have, you know, made significant growth. And one of the things we know about when you're a level four school is we have to not only make growth, but we have to make up some of those deficits. So kudos to the teachers. This is our math data, same setup. Third grade again exceeded their growth a little bit. Math is, you know, it's a place where we have more room for growth. This is our district learning walk data comparing our fall. So this is a tool, we walk through, we are measuring 10 different areas, and these practices that we're looking for and we get feedback on correlate to, these are the systems we need to have in place to enhance student learning outcomes. Green, so you can see the benchmark at the bottom, we have shown growth, significant growth, from our fall data in all standards to our spring data, and our spring data was collected in March. We're pretty happy about that. One of the things that was really nice for the teachers to hear is that the AIR report, when we saw where we had room for growth, the AIR report that I'm going to talk about a little bit later, they gave us the same feedback. So I think it was really validating to the teachers to think that an outside agency was coming in and validating the work that they're doing with our own in-district tool. There you go, thank you.
Okay, so my slides are going to mirror the same setup as Shannon's. You can see the DIBELS, we still have some struggling students at the beginning phase again. Teachers, I think at the beginning, were kind of like, "Why are we doing the DIBELS already?" But I think that since we saw the data, we were able to hit them pretty hard right now for the last two months of school, so.
One thing I want to explain is DIBELS deals with code-based skills, and GATES deals with comprehension, so that's why we're using both, is because ultimately, in the past, we only used DIBELS, which would really give us a false sense of where kids are. So now, we use both of those in tandem to really help and understand our students' growth in both those areas.
Yeah, and I think when I went over this with a little higher kindergarten teacher, we were happy to see not only 10% at the beginning, because at the beginning of the year, you know, she really worked hard to get the kids that were at the bottom out of the red and into the yellow and green. This is our reading achievement and growth, and if you quick eyeball the bottom, you could see the bias starting to project it. That's where our projected growth was, and it appears we've just about reached or exceeded the growth for reading in all the grades. If you look at the second chart, there's lightly shaded green areas, and those are where we've moved. If you look at the chart on the left, for grade one, beginning, they started the year with 45% at the beginning of the year, but in the second chart, there's only 10. So if you quick eyeball down the red in each from fall to spring, you'll notice we're up to 45, 19, 25, and the numbers are much smaller in the spring, so that is a good thing, something to be celebrated. And then the same with the green, so we've moved kids out of maybe the yellow into the green, so we've ended the year with less beginners and more readings in all areas across reading on the map. And here's the math. Again, on the right-hand side, you can see the growth from the beginning and the meters in the green, and on the very bottom, we've just about succeeded in achieving our projected growth. And I will say, I've been in other districts where they've done this math testing, and, you know, congrats to ACES too, because I really have rarely seen charts with diamonds and then the columns going above it, so, you know, I think I've been impressed with everything I've been seeing here in the district. So I think this too is good, I think we did this a little early as well, but this, we were able to hit students where we saw in the data before MCAS happened, that we were able to kind of fill in the gaps based on this data. So I think that's, oh, the walkthrough data? We kind of fell a little bit in some of them, but if you'll notice, our second, our spring data, there were only four classrooms observed, so the percentages kind of get off, but it still gives us an area, and we've looked over the past two years, that this data is kind of guiding the path for our school improvement plan for next year. So we're using this data, you know, as much as we'd like to see all green, having some of the yellow or red gives us, you know, an area to focus in for the school improvement for next year.
And I do want to mention, from a statistical point of view, because the numbers are here so small that one person can plummet their numbers very quickly, so we're not sure the data system for this particular school is quite as accurate as we can see in other buildings, just because the pool is so small. So I want to make sure that's said, because ultimately, one person could take you from 100% down to 75% a lap. So it's important that people understand that.
But that's why we looked over two years and kind of seen if we could see patterns as small as they were. Okay, thank you.
Well, your company call was, if not humbly, kind of embarrassing, Tom Osborne and I presented in the winter after that administration, and it was shocking to us, we suspected there was some thing going on, and the teachers impressed upon students' importance, dominated conference, and all their goals of improvement. We offered some incentives, we were going to take it very seriously, and then I spoke to all the students about, you know, really putting the time out for students to obtain some authentic results. Happy to say there was a jump in almost every subject from winter to spring, and we caught up a little bit from what we wanted to see. So from the fall to the spring, fifth in reading achievement and growth, Metis Books, he had his heart, still a little weak in sixth, a new program, and fewer teachers, I think, you know, may account for that at that grade level. Seventh, Met, and eighth, outstated quite. The math, fifth came close, sixth clearly a need there, and working with a consultant and, you know, we're working to address that need. We did do some interventions after school in three grades, so hoping that will help for the MCAS. Seventh, Met, and eighth, although I actually see it a bit.
With the [inaudible] are there, I think it's important for people to know, in the consultant department, one of the things they found was the curriculum we were using may not be rigorous enough in relationship to the new MCAS standard. So there's been a change in the curriculum there from Engage New York to Open Up Math, and we're hoping that will help with some of that. In addition to that, we will have another consultant agency coming in to actually review the actual obstruction that's happening in the middle school, and they'll be giving us feedback there as well to see what else will need to be done, and I think that's happening at the end of March for Unmade. Correct, Molly?
Correct, that's what we got.
Yeah, so we're hoping that will help as well, so we're very quickly looking and assessing that situation.
Garcia, I wish we had the green that ACES had. We don't. Well, we tried this last round in the learning walk, is to have the teachers focus in three areas, particularly one and two, like I said, very clearly above, oh, 80% there, they, almost every classroom has clear, positive objectives, planning, reflective, meeting that. And number nine for engagement was a strong point, clearly there's some areas there that we focused on, three areas, it was less focused on some of the others, which were open to put them all in the green, et cetera.
And one of the things I want to mention for the school committee, based on our budget, this was one of our target areas, to put a literacy academic coach into the building to try to help with some of this, so that teachers are getting more coaching in those instructional strategies that make a difference for students. So next year, we will have a K to eight math coach and a K to eight literacy coach, so that more time can be spent with individual teachers in the classroom, really understanding and implementing these strategies. And that was discussed and talked about at length before the budget, and so this just reemphasizes the need for that. And so this just reemphasizes the need for that.
Okay, so, high school, high school ELA. Last time we were here, we talked about the ninth graders and, so you don't actually see the winter, but winter was stagnant in ninth grade last time we were here. So we talked about increasing the rigor in that ninth grade, in those ninth grade classes, which we had to focus on throughout that next period of time. And you can see, we were able to move that middle group about nine points up into the meeting area, actually, 11 points up to the meeting area. So that focus did actually make a positive impact. In regards to the 10th graders, our focus throughout the year is 10th graders, to get them to pass the MCAS. So that's where all of our resources and all of our attention in regards to extra interventions happened. So our focus has been on those 10th graders and those interventions. And you can see how much we were able to move those students out of the beginning and progressing up into the meeting category. So in the end, 94% of those students were either progressing or meeting. So I think that was, we kind of analyzed it, that was the biggest difference. Our focus was 10th grade interventions. It's something we really need to consider. We have the resources to put extra interventions into the ninth graders to be able to move them that much more in the ninth grade year. Regards to the math at the school, at the high school. See that we were able to move our ninth graders out of the beginning, more into the progressing, and a little less success at the 10th grade level. I just, in analyzing all of this, we kind of just wanna speak to the importance of consistency in the classroom. And without getting too deep into it, there wasn't the consistency in the classroom that we needed to be able to make that progress in that 10th grade class. Health and other issues come up in people's lives, so it does make an effect. And when we talk about being there every single day for our students, I think that speaks a lot to it right in front of us.
The other thing to keep in mind, remember that this year, we made a change in the curriculum at the high school, in that we went to Algebra 1A and Geometry 1A, which means they didn't get the whole four-year course, they only got half of it. They'll get the second half next year, to try to slow down the pace and make sure more kids are retaining. So remember, this test, this testing is that the kids took the whole year. So we are gonna see a little different impact here because of that. What will really tell us the story is next year, when we test the 10th graders, because they will have had the 1A and 1B, and then they will go on to the, you know, the, excuse me, they both will have the 1A, and next year, they'll have the 1B, Geometry and Algebra. So we should see some significant change, but we anticipated this would happen, because we slowed the curriculum down, because we saw our kids coming into the high school were not willing to be, wanted to make sure we gave them more time. So we're very hopeful that next year, we'll see improvement here.
Last bit is our walkthrough data. Without getting into it too much, our focus for next year is on turnaround practices in regards to instructional practices and student engagement. So indicators, three through nine, focus on those areas. That's what our focus will be this summer, to really try to provide support to our teachers so we can really enhance our adjustments to practice and student engagement strategies.
And so one of the things we will be doing this year is really adding, what we've been able to do is internally through scheduling, cut down the number of classes a one teacher is teaching in the building to try to give more instructional help in the classroom for next year at the high school. And in addition to that, through our Title 2 A1, we are putting in to hire a part-time math coach at the high school. So there will be no additional money needed from our budget, it comes from a grant budget. But we believe that also will help, because one of the things we're realizing is some of it is really understanding conceptual development of mathematics and being able to instruct in that way, and some of our teachers struggle. So we really need somebody who really deeply understands the math and can work with them on a weekly basis. So we are, we will be putting that in next year, which will hopefully help moving forward as well. And I do wanna recognize the fact that the high school did make some shifts last year in their scores, but are hoping it will again. Blackroomism built in a day, but they are making the strides to see that even happen.
New business.
Charles, we just wanna recognize that, they, as you know, we've got a piano donated to the school, but the problem was how this piano from the house to the building. And so past time, we was, we only would have said $700 for that to happen. They actually donated their services, so I just wanna recognize them tonight for their support in getting the piano.
Okay, next. You do have a copy of the retainer agreement in the district and due for a in our offices. Just to summarize, for those that will be watching the tape later on, this agreement is between the district and Fred McBray at our office, who represents the school system as general counsel, labor relations counsel, and sped counsel. And his retainer is $4,000 a month. And the agreement covers day-to-day advice, legal opinions, contract administration, contract negotiations, et cetera. So we do need to have a motion to, we can have this, this would be for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, may I please?
Give a second.
Just a second, please.
Discussion. Dave, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a thing. Our trainer is always professional work, always available when needed. And I think it's a great job force and eager to look and discuss.
Anything further? Seen done, all those in favor? Hold, extension.
Thank you, we're looking forward to working for you for the year. Fred, I have a copy. Well, two, actually. One to my office.
Curriculum review data.
I have more support to promote than go with that.
You have a copy of the curriculum review guide in your packet. This is a guide for our district to have a more sustainable process for how we're reviewing and adopting curriculum moving forward. So we have a curriculum review team that meets every other week. And that team has been working on this guide and formally approved and adopted this in February. And what this does is it outlines what our district's goals are and procedures and practices around the development and the revision of curriculum. It outlines a four-step cycle for how to go through and have teams review that curriculum in a more systematic and outlined fashion, including components at each stages of that cycle. And in addition to that, what you'll see in here is a schedule or timeline for which subjects we'll be reviewing in which part of that cycle for the next, I believe it's a five-year cycle, six-year cycle, excuse me, no, five, thank you. A five-year cycle. So are there any questions regarding that?
Mitch.
Yes, just a comment, and I very much appreciate that the work that you've done here. I know there were a number of us lobbying for this for any number of years, have a regular curriculum cycle with specific timelines. And I think that's a real accomplishment for this administration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The step towards us having that accountability system in place for us, as well as structures and systems to keep it systematic for us throughout the rest of the year.
I agree very much with Mitch, this is comprehensive and very, very essential.
Thank you. R C S, can I please, for your presentation?
So this is just a look back at last year's report, school improvement plan. We're working towards next year's based on the data. But I just, I'm going to give you an update on how we did this year. You have it up right there?
Nope.
Okay, that's our math stat. Ricky, I think his name is or something. All right, you can, oh, yeah. So strategic number one was based on results of assessments. The lowest performing students would be identified. And we would develop a plan that would be implemented in both ELA and math. So at the very beginning of the year, we didn't have the official state report of the lowest performing students. So we kind of went by identifying based on the fall math. And then we cross-referenced it when the list came out from the state. At monthly data meetings with teachers, we kind of monitored, kept a close eye on all of these lowest performers. And the data meetings are with myself and individual teachers. And at regular faculty meetings, we just kind of went over and remembered, these are the lowest performers, keep an extra eye out on them. Intervention plans were set up. Our Title 1 teacher, Vivian, is kind of like a surgeon, when she goes in to kind of diagnose issues with reading and whatnot. So she met with the regular ed teachers. These students were monitored through Wonders Assessment, Title 1 Assessments, and Math Testing. The results show that 11, eight out of the 11 lowest performers, so 73% met their projected growth on math, ELA and math. And two of the three that did not meet, we cross-referenced it with their attendance records. And we noticed that there were some of the ones that are, if not chronically absent, are hovering right about 10%, which is considered chronically absent. So. Our second strategic objective was to increase the overall ELA, MCAS, and math scores through implementation of literacy, literacy strategies across all curriculums. So again, we kind of did this at the beginning of the year, and I didn't know much about the school, the staff, the district. So I looked at the MCAS scores, a lot of them were hovering right around 493 to 95. So we kind of just said, let's push it to 500. But we saw implementation of keys to literacy strategies in all grade levels, all subject areas, including the speech teacher. I observed doing the top-down web, the physical education teacher had me come in and actually did a top-down web there. We are all seeing top-down webs everywhere in our lives now, because once you learn it, you just kind of see them everywhere. But those were the two, the most commonly used strategies, were top-down webs and two-column notes. Key ideas and details showed the most growth in literacy as opposed to informational reading, that's what that should say. 71% of all students scored meeting expectations on the spring ELA map. And this was just kind of a little data guide that we did into informational text versus literary text. So you could see that the literary text, we did a really good job in growing on the key ideas and details. The last column all the way down shows we grew 21 points, but on the informational text, only six points. So I think our teachers on whole are really good at, you know, diving into literature. So this will kind of point the direction to work a little bit more on informational text for next year. Ensure alignment of grades three to five science curriculum to the mass next-generation science standards. I'm a former science teacher, so I thought that looking at what we had and the transition to NGSS, we didn't have much, but this year, grade five is fully aligned. There's going to be a volunteer elementary science committee forming. We plan to meet at least once before summer and maybe throughout summer. Grades three and four will begin to align this summer. All grades three through five have new curriculum and materials. Darcy okayed the order to go in, to go in all in with three to five. So that's exciting. And my goal is to be fully aligned by opening day, to use baseball terms, I guess. Oh, that SEMSCOPE is also what they're using at the middle school. So grade six, seven, and eight as well. So it'll be a nice kind of through line to the middle school. Strategic objective number four was to decrease chronic absenteeism, which is 18 days or more, or 10%. Our state target last year was 7.5% of students. Unfortunately, we were at 19% last year of students that were considered chronically absent. So what we did is we had bi-weekly meetings of the attendance committee, which consisted of our school nurse, myself, and the guidance counselor. We tracked last year's attendance. Those kids that popped up as being chronically absent last year, and right from day one, we started tracking, we had them in a separate group to kind of keep an eye on their attendance. Then we tracked patterns of absenteeism for this year. We sent home letters encouraging attendance with fact sheets when students reach X amount of days or are getting closer to the 10% of days absent. But we also congratulated, that's what's there, certificates, those who improved attendance percentage over time. So if they were at 10% and they moved down to 8%, we kind of sent home congratulations and thank you. And a sixth-grade student went home and was just so happy that he got it and put it on the refrigerator. So those little things, I think, kind of help. Currently, there's only 4% of our students considered chronically absent. So that's five students. Three of them actually have medical issues. So I think we're doing pretty good on that, on that front. Any questions? Moving forward, solidify the silent curriculum in grades three and four. Our goal with the instructional leadership team, we're already talking about it, is to better follow the process for multi-tiered systems of support for academics and behavior, and attendance actually on there, and better use of data to drive specific actionable classroom observations and feedback for teachers. So just making our observations more kind of specific about what we're looking for using that data. Do you have any questions?
Charles.
Yes.
Could you define top-down web?
Yes, top-down webs are amazing, these wonderful, oh, they're all over. So when students read a text, they put the main idea at the top, and then they put on the next level, like, subtopics, and then they go down from there. So they're learning kind of the organization and structure of pieces of writing. And you can use them in every single subject. And it's kind of amazing, and kids take to it. And when all the teachers are using it, math and social studies and science, they're kind of connecting that we read in reading, but we also read in math. And we also read in science, and we also read in social studies. And you really attack a piece of writing the same way. Yeah, and you take those two column, I mean, you take the webs, and then those can be put into two-column notes. And from there, we generate questions and go from there. Does that make sense yet?
Yeah, just something else I wanted to say. I'm just blown away by your success in reducing chronic absenteeism. You know, I never knew that much improvement would have been possible, which means there were things we were never doing before.
Right, right. And I don't think we were until, you know, we looked at the data across the system and we said, what are we doing about this? And there was no real system in place. So I think, I think it was good. At the beginning, we're like, how are we gonna do this, you know? And I think, and kids, when you talk to them, hey, I'm glad you're here today. And the teachers are really good at saying, glad you showed up for school today, good job. Because I think sometimes, you know, if nobody misses them, they tend to not wanna come, you know? So I think we'll keep working on that. I'm hoping to keep it at four, right?
The one thing I do wanna say for all the principals, remember, data decision-making process didn't really exist prior to this year. And the principals have really taken to it. As you can see, the panel is just looking at the layout, well, this many kids are proficient, they're actually digging down in and figuring out. For example, she talked about informational text versus literature and how we're doing, so we can really get focused and targeted. And that's why we're seeing an improvement. So I wanna give a lot of credit to the principals, because we thought a lot of them in a very short period of time. And they have been troopers in understanding it and moving forward with it, and also keeping their teachers on board and their willingness to try it. So I really wanna say thank you to them for that.
Mitch.
I wanted to take this opportunity, I wanted to say it early, we moved on too quickly, but I was, again, impressed by the principals' presentation of the data from their individual schools. And I know that because of the fact that our district and the principals and central office administrators are getting to be so good at using the data, we sometimes forget how far we've come. But I think it's great that they're able to see areas of improvement, and they're also able to focus on areas that haven't seen improvement, or in fact, have even gone backwards and just decided, okay, what are we gonna do about this going forward? So again, it's a very professional kind of school system that we have now that relies on data. We did a lot of talking, Darcy, about data in the past. We did a little bit of dabbling with data here and there in terms of a fully organized system where everybody was on the same page and using data religiously. I think that's what's so different. I think that's what's so different in this year and last year.
Okay, Casey's air report.
So we had our air report come back with just feedback. So some of you may know, but I'll just refresh your memory if you are not aware. As part of our turnaround plan, one of our requirements is that we get an outside consultant contracted through Destiny, and that is American Institute for Research. And they come out and they do a very comprehensive study. And they give you feedback on here's where you are, this is where you need to go, but here's where you are with that outside lens. It's pretty comprehensive. It is two days where they are in, I think they were in just about every classroom in our building. They send a survey to all of the staff. They have focus group meetings with staff. They have in-depth interviews with all of the school leaders, curriculum directors, academic coaches. Some teachers are pulled out for individual long, long interviews. And then they write a report where they give you a lot of progress, a lot of feedback about where you are in your turnaround practice. It can be a little nerve-wracking. This was my first time doing this, and when they sent it, I was like, holy moly. So we get that report back, and it comes in two sections. One is feedback about classroom data, and one is feedback about your, all the written narrative stuff. And then they kind of combine it and say, this is where you stand. So what we've identified is that we have, of those four turnaround practices, we have a really, we're very strong in our school climate and culture. That we got some really good feedback from our state systems of support because they were encouraging and telling us that you have to be really strong there to move the instructional piece. So if that's a weakness, you have to spend your attention on that first. So if that was a strength, was a real, real boost to what we were feeling when we saw the walkthrough data had validated some of the things we're seeing on the walkthrough data that this is what an outside agency is also finding.
Do you want to go over to second, Jen?
Sure.
Jen is being humble. She got sustaining, which is the highest data level. So I want to make sure people hear that. She's being very humble, but, you know, there are several levels to this. And she received, her school received the highest data level in this area. So I want to make sure people are aware of that.
Well, there were a lot of pieces in place before I got there, so I'm not going to take too much credit. But we're really happy to see that. I think the teachers felt, you know, a little bit empowered, and certainly the admin team did. We also have a strength in classroom organization, practices around productivity, our rituals and routines, which means we're not losing a lot of instructional time in transition, dealing with behavior management. So when our kids are in school, for the most part, they're working. And our instructional learning format, we have a lot of systems in place. So, oop, I think these got out of order. So the four performance areas are limited evidence, which we don't want to have at all because that means it's like you're not even doing it. Developing, which means there's systems in place, but those systems haven't become consistent practices yet. So it's pretty clear what we're supposed to be doing, but it's not consistent. Providing means that it's pretty uniform across the school. There might be little tweaks. And one of them, when I was reading the report, said communication. So that was a little tweak we need to do to get it at our highest level. But that's pretty consistent, that practice is in place. And then sustaining, which means this is working well for them. So this is the breakdown of all that stuff. This is where we fall. So in turnaround practice one, leadership, shared responsibility, professional collaboration, we are at providing. So we've done the bulk of the work. We should feel pretty good about that. But there's a little room for improvement, some tweaks that we can push ourselves into sustaining. Intentional practices for improving instruction, also providing. Turnaround practice three, this is where the bulk of our work now needs to be. Student-specific supports and instructions for all students. This is the focus of our turnaround plan. We've been talking about this with our ILT team, looking at this is where we are. That's where our next year's plans are going to focus because the data says that's our weakest area. And then school climate and culture is that sustaining. So next steps. We've already done some of these steps. We reviewed the data with our state system of support team. And we kind of unpacked it, and they gave us some feedback about how to prioritize and strategize. Review with our ILT team, we've already started to do that. Our instructional leadership team has started to really give some feedback. And that's really important to get the staff buying that they have a voice. We are currently working on developing our plan for next year. And some of our target areas will be that we're going to review and modify our intervention block, which when we look at our weakest area, those student-specific supports, it makes sense. That will be, you know, looking at how are we effectively meeting the needs of our diverse student population. Work with our Title I and special education staff to meet those needs. And PD on differentiation and rigor as focus areas for next year. We had a PD staff meeting this afternoon where we started talking with staff about this is what the focus for next year is going to look like. So we can start laying that groundwork and that they can, you know, be prepared for what's coming as our focus area for next year.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Having served in the past on state school study teams, going into a school, and there are things that we were looking for, obviously, much longer than the state is looking for now. You have some things foundationally in place that I've seen other schools not have at all. And they were lost, and they were in trouble. It's very encouraging to see how strong and foundational things are, as we mentioned. It's also encouraging to see how teachers have moved over this course of time into more elaborate practice and more involved practice. And the fact that you get, which is really the bottom line, when these, when these teams go into schools, that the administration doesn't get, and they're not interacting correctly with the faculty and the staff, and they're not all moving in the same directions as the team, they're not going to get it. This is obviously kind of a record of the fact that it is happening. And you're doing a very good job.
Agreed.
Hey, Carla, one more.
I just, I want to say, when I got this out of the packet, I pulled out the similar report that was produced at this time in 2017 and just checked how we had done over time. And there were many more places where we had improved, where we had gotten a higher rating than there were places where we had a lower rating. One of the lower-rating ones was, didn't make any sense. And I think it was one where they changed the criteria completely. But it just shows, it's an indication of the real progress your school and the system is making because of this relentless focus on improvement.
I think when we look at our data, and we disaggregate it, and you know, we're trying to give a brief overview, but they rank in each practice, the twenty, they saw twenty-two classrooms. And we've noticed even sometimes where we might have had one classroom that, like Darcy said, kind of an outlier, and they lower the overall, we saw a lot of movement where most of our classrooms are in the highest performing range. So there's a lot, when you look at that report, that you can't see from a raw number, but that shows that some of that, those trends are going in the right direction.
Mitch.
Yeah, a few things. One is, again, the report is for the most part glowing. And I want to congratulate you on that, and I want to congratulate Julie and Amy on that. I want to congratulate Molly on that, superintendent on that. It's really a teamwork approach that has manifested itself in some really great scores. The question I'm going to ask is, I went through this, and I tried to use my two highlighters, yellow and red. And I used the yellow one for all the good things that I saw. If you would see this, you'd see that it's just filled with yellow. But I used the pink one every time there was a concern.
Sure.
And as I said, I'm actually asking you to confirm what I suspect. And that is, when I go through this, I say, all right, what do they point out as the areas of concern? And I'm not going to elaborate on those very much. But as an example, it says, common concerns about level of trust between staff and their instructional supports. And not being able to get to all the classes that the staff member needed to get to during the intervention period, developing trust between various groups, opportunities for gifted and talented not necessarily offered to everybody, those kinds of things. And there are a few other areas. Do you do as I've done, which is?
Darcy and I sat, and we looked with the SOS team. And so there's room for growth, there's no doubt. We're a level four school, so our kids that are gifted and talented, do we need to augment them? That's a fair enough critique, absolutely.
So you do exactly what often I'm praising Darcy for doing. You pinpoint the areas of concern and say, okay, how do we deal with this going forward?
Right, right. And I think a lot of those things you just spoke about are going to directly fall when we said we need to have student-specific supports. So that student-specific support might not just be our struggling student. What do we do to our really gifted student who's sitting in there? That's a student-specific support also. So I think all those things you highlighted fall under that area that's our weakest. So there's work to do. Those are certainly the areas where we have to do better. And that use of instructional coaching, I think that's something that is a relatively new position. And trust is built over time and experience.
Okay, and I want to end with the positive. One of the things that was most impressive about this report is their quotations from either school leaders or even more so from overhead teachers who are not necessarily school leaders. So when someone says about the feedback that you get back, that it was specific and useful, that gives immediate feedback with little tags, say what they saw, what our strengths are, what we could possibly think of, like questions moving forward, that's been really helpful. Those kinds of comments, I think, really enable us to see what's happening in that school. And what I saw in here really reflected very well on you and also reflected very well on the few times I've been in as part of the walk-throughs. And those are exactly the kinds of things that I see that they're talking about in here. So I think it's a very descriptive, a very accurate report of what's happening. And for the most part, it's extraordinarily positive. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll take a note to set one.
I just want to note on that report, you should know, this is still in draft. Chin has a chance to write back. There are any errors where they felt they got it wrong and give specific feedback on that. So the final report you will get, I doubt there will be many changes to the document, but you may see one or two once that happens. But I thought it was important to at least begin the conversation in the school.
The changes will be minor, if anything.
Okay. You do have, under communications, you have your usual enrollment information.
So I just want to note to the school committee again, one of the things we're looking at, if you take a look at the Athol Elementary Community School, that in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, we have five classes. If we roll this up for next year, we have a delivery of fourth grade. In that, you know, the class size is moving over. As you can see, we're in the twenties in every area. There really isn't a place to move. So we may have to consider putting in an additional fourth-grade teacher as we move forward. Pre-K is really not a good predictor because, remember, not everybody goes into preschool. So we don't want to say we're only looking, because if we're looking at the numbers that are in preschool now, rolling into kindergarten, it looks like we could go and, you know, eliminate a class. But that's not the case because we still have to be, it will be kids coming in who have never come to our preschool. And last year, as you can see, we had a large number coming in. The other thing that's positive is the overall number in the district has gone up. Almost, I think it's sixty students this year. And as you can see, our smallest class is graduating from the high school this year. If our trend remains, we're going to continue to go up. And I want to say that we are one of the few districts in Franklin and Worcester County that is actually going up and not down. I was at a meeting with the Franklin County superintendents. They were all talking about losing students. And I said, we have the opposite problem. So we're very excited about that. I think that's also an indicator as to the quality of the education students are starting to get in Athol or else that, so.
Carla.
I'm looking at the class sizes in grade one compared to grade two next year, which is really pushing the top of the level of the class size we wanted. Have we thought about the possibility of adding another class for grade three, two?
Yeah, we could, but money's going to become an issue. I think we have a contingency plan for one. We don't necessarily have a contingency plan for two. So we're really going to have to think about what does that look like? And one of the places we could potentially look is the high school. But if you take away a position at the high school, what you're eliminating is some choice for the kids. And so that's the worry. Because we look at the high school right now, our average class size is fourteen or less. So that's a possibility. But again, the problem with high schools is the less teachers you have, the more difficult it is to offer choice for kids. But it is something we could potentially look at.
Ken, since we're talking about enrollment, do we have figures on how many students we have at Monty Tech?
At Monty Tech, I believe we can only, our school, we fill all our slots. And I believe it's thirty or thirty-five day?
It was twenty-six. I think we had, I think it was twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Eighteen of them right now, out of the middle school. I believe was the number that I was told by guidance today.
Today that are going over to Monty Tech. But I think we have, we are allowed to have thirty slots. It usually refills them, but it sounds like it might be less next year than previous years.
Yeah, we've found some kids that have already said that, even though they've got in, they're not growing, but they'll just go down to the next group of kids.
So we'd be looking at about ninety students here for freshman.
That's what we're projecting.
Yes.
Under financial statements and approval of accounts, to date expenditure report.
Okay, if you pull out your expenditure report, not a lot, I mean, not a lot of activity that I can really point to that's out of the unusual. We're still at, when we look at page three, we still have the three long-term subs right now in the district. I know, I think we've got two more to add to that just for the very end of the year here as we're changing some staff, some staff are retiring. Our substitute line on page four, right now through the first year of May is still at forty-nine, actually, which is not bad. But I think what we've learned in the past is May, June, sometimes takes a dive in that account. So hopefully, that'll be positive. It's, it seems to be an average of about fifteen or sixty thousand dollars a month. So if we say that, and May and June is fifteen thousand dollars, that would be thirty. That would leave us, you know, some funds there. We'll see, we'll see what happens. On page five, under instructional materials, halfway down, you see arms in high school. I think Beth was talking about the science materials. The middle school science materials are in. I know they're being kept in. We're paying invoices now. And the high school science materials have just been ordered. So both, big, big amounts of budget are going through those materials. And hopefully, they will get to be in good juice and go to high school and middle school next year. I know they will be. So we did, we were able to squeeze those both into this budget, this year's budget. So that's a good thing. And being that said, we decreased, you know, the general supplies, the general supplies, which is right now is fourteen thousand dollars to help pay for that. So we'll get those invoices in, and your next report will reflect, reflect both those orders being there. Let's see, transportation services on page seven at the very top, we're still keeping an eye on that. Now, as we explained last time, we had some, you know, unanticipated transportation issues that we had to deal with. And when you transport, when we're mandated to transport, we're mandated to transport. So when somebody moves in or out and you have to transport them, it sort of takes you, sort of blindsides you sometimes, you know, that transportation. So I'll keep that in mind as we're closing out. I can't believe we're halfway through May already. And then a couple other issues on page eight, we've all been tracking the RCS water. And that budget has gone over. that budget has gone over, you know, $14,500 so far, but, you know, right now, the law is working with the contract to get that chemical system in, to take care of the chemical issues that happen with the water, so hopefully next year's budget will be online, but this was unanticipated. And then, I think, on the very last page, I want to bring your attention to the principal of the high school ARP project, there's a $75,000 note there. And Lee does have the note he can watch tonight, but as chair, he'll need to sign, and that's a long-term note for the high school project that will become due in June, so that $75,000 will basically go away once that note becomes due. The 978 at the bottom is tracking well. You know, again, in May and June, we get a little blindsided with some invoices that come in that we either didn't encumber, or that have been late, but if we close the way I think we're going to close, we should see E and D at maybe about $450,000, which is good, we were figuring about 400, so I think it might be 450, which is a good thing. I mean, it's not huge, but it's better than what we expected, and that's always a good thing. So expenditures are looking good and are tracking good.
But I do want you to know, don't stop letting me spend money on anything about a comprehensive spending.
Pressing it to the ground. The revenues as well, they're coming in good, I think, again, will be on target for the revenues, which will keep us on target for E and D as well.
Mitch, sorry. Could you tell me where we utilize crossing guards, or how many top crossing guards, or where do we utilize in the district this year?
Right, I think, probably Shan can talk more about it, but we do have a crossing guard, we could, we could, two crossing guards, yeah, right.
Are those at the school, or is still one at Pleasant Street?
Well, I have, we have a pleasant, old Pleasant Street building, and then one further down near, closer to our building.
Will those be impacted at all by the sidewalk construction that's currently going on?
Ultimately, I'll speak to that. Ultimately, I told you, Lynn, that we may have to put the one at the Pleasant Street School back in if the sidewalk is finished, because right now, we did an audit, the number of kids coming down the street, and it was about six total, so we couldn't validate continuing that position. However, with the sidewalk going in, we may see a much larger problem coming up, so we've kind of set that aside, saying, if we're in this situation, we'll do that. The other one up at the school, I don't see us replacing, and the reason for that is ultimately now, two administrators, we're hoping that one can be outside to replace that, because before, we did only have one assistant principal, now having an assistant principal and an own childhood director, and we may not need that additional order.
Chuck.
Hopefully, we can get a jump on. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
With the new sidewalk on Pleasant Street, will there be a need to have a crossing guard right there in front of Kessler's House on Pleasant Street, where they'll be crossing Pleasant Street?
That's where the shift will happen. We still use the same individual, we just haven't moved it.
I just like to make a comment, this, once that project is done, and I know, you know, you may be a little bit love this, but I mean, earlier, my concern in the winter times, is sidewalks get plowed by municipal group rather than, I know a lot of towns say the responsibility belongs to the homeowner, you know, let's be real about that, in situations where kids are walking in the street, they're certainly not safe. And, you know, I would like to see us find some agreement eventually with the people in the town, to have some kind of machine that can come up and plow the sidewalks.
Oh, sorry, Mitch.
I would think that, I would think that that's going to be done, and see these sidewalks all along Hapton Street, hoping, like, city machines, I assume they're city machines, and I know that homeowners, businesses are required to plow the sidewalks in front of their building, but I don't think that homeowners are there.
There's a town by, or a town in Athol, places that places that responsibility onto homeowners.
What am I seeing all along Hapton Street?
Because most likely, that stretch of Hapton Street, that property's probably town-owned.
So my comment to Chuck is, if you buy the equipment, I'm sure the town will plow whatever we want them to plow.
Just as a side note, because this comes up quite frequently, and trust me, I'm not too sure how receptive the natives of Athol would be if we said we're going to plow Pleasant Street sidewalks and don't plow anywhere else. But the device that is used for municipalities to do that the proper way is $185,000 for that one.
Chuck's got it.
So it's a matter of trying to find that into capital planning eventually.
The other thing is, the school district will actually save someone named Lawson as a result, so there may be some way to balance that.
Okay. Budget line transfer?
No budget line transfer tonight, but I'm sure there'll be some in June, and there'll definitely be some in July.
The PFA bid amendment, Lynn, do you want to explain what that is, or I can, whatever you want?
Yep, because the high school ARP project, the roof and the boiler, which have already been done, because those, well, actually because of the three bids, because now we've got all of our windows and our doors, and also, because those three bids are done, and bids came under $1.8 million, what MSBA had estimated, and allowed us to borrow 10.5, now it's down to 8.5 because of the bids. Basically, what they're saying is, now we need to think about what we're going to do with that excess, that 1.8, are we going to take it out of the budget, or are we going to put it into contingency? Our OPM strongly suggested we put it into contingency, and I think Fred was of the same mindset, we just transfer that bid saving to the contingency, then during the rest of the project, we still cut the windows and doors going in in July and August, if something else happens, or, you know, some unanticipated expense comes along, you've got that in the budget. So in order to do that, MSBA requires us to do this, what's called PFA bid amendment, to transfer the funds out of the general construction into contingency life, that's what they do.
And just so everybody understands, because, believe me, I've looked into this and tried to stretch it five different ways to put it on track, but that budget money, that money is project money that is borrowed specifically and is contained in the MSBA project. It's not available fund, so at the end of the day, if we end it, $1.8 million under budget, that's not cash in the bank that we can spend, that's just borrowing capacity, so that would go away. We do have a motion that somebody needs to make, I'll read it. It's to maintain the total budget project of the PFA amendment for the Athol High School project, and the bid savings of $1,826,011 is reallocated to the construction contingency, and therefore ineligible for reimbursement for section 2.3 of the PFA. Moved by Ken, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Mentions? Okay. Is there anything for strategic plan?
Yes, one other thing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
I'm sorry. We do have, and this just came to light before, before the agenda was made, before I, before the final warrant was done, we discovered, the high school discovered that they had $2,018.94 worth of hospital tutoring bills to a company called Learn Well, Learn Well, yes, that actually were sent to us at the end of last year, right? We think what happened is they were emailed to the previous principal's email, and they were stuck in there, and nobody, you know, obviously was looking at that. So they came to light today, and so I do have, for vote, if you would, both fiscal 18 bills for the hospital tutoring, to pay Learn Well, $2,018.94, to finish up last year's bills that seem to have been stuck in somebody's email.
Mitch?
I'm, we paid Learn Well what we owe them.
Second by God. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Strategic plan update?
All of it was covered under our unfinished business, new business.
Reports of the chair this evening, just to bring to your, everybody should have received an email containing all the upcoming graduation activities for Athol High School, and just, I'm not sure if this was included or not, but I did receive this today, so I wanted to just announce that the school committee, on Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, at 2:30, at Athol High School Auditorium, you're invited to the Athol High School Alternative Program graduation. That is, again, the date is Wednesday, June 5th, at 2:30, at Athol High School. Okay, budget finance, that committee has not met, it will be, but obviously, our budget date probably will be, again, towards the end of the fiscal year. Our budget has been set, approved, will be approved with the upcoming June meeting. Facilities, Ken?
Yes, I don't have a written report, because we've met at 6:00 this evening. We discussed, as we have here at the committee level, the water situation, the implementation of chemical process, to process the water here, which the committee is familiar with. We voted $250,000 to pay the project manager, the last bill for Royal Steam, and architect, and some of the windows, which will be started soon. And we talked about the control system that probably needs to be updated for the middle school. The school is 20 years old now, we have a similar control system at the high school, and at Aces, and the project cost is going to be upwards of $150-plus thousand, so it's something that we will be talking about in the future.
Thank you. Negotiations?
Negotiations, has upcoming meetings scheduled, and we're trying very hard to get a contract settled before we end the school year.
Academic excellence?
Academic excellence, met this morning, we received information on Title I and special education work, upcoming plans with professional development, the AIR report, which we all received information from Shannon this evening, turnaround plan for the high school, partnership with YMCA for summer school, district literacy committee writing portfolio, and the math intervention committee.
Public relations?
We did not meet this past month.
Policy subcommittee?
Policy, not this morning. In your packet, you have the adopted policy, the EDH, that was approved last time, go into your policy book, and we moved several policies forward to the school committee for approval, and, but they will not appear until the June meeting.
Committee member referrals, let's start with Tim. Bill?
Nothing there.
Joe? Ken? Mitch?
Just the, if you could help me out, would you mention all the things that are coming up, graduations, step-up ceremonies, I'm getting calls from people asking me, I'm taking photographs this year, I want to get the word across, that as I told them last year, that I stopped doing that, I don't want any parents showing up here, expecting that I'm going to do it and find out, if I can get any shots, that I can have a bar that can, so that we can spread the word, principals, et cetera, step-up ceremonies and graduations. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, as the CPAC liaison, I just want to let you know, they did have their meeting last month, Fred was advised, the CPAC, that they were able to go ahead with their building of the website, and advised them not to put the ARRC logo. They also have some survey data presentation that they'd like to present, and they will be requesting a meeting with Darcy to utilize the robocall system to have CPAC notifications go up to parents in the district. Other than that, I wanted to say thank you at ARMS, as a parent at ARMS, I wanted to say thank you for offering the math tutoring for the MCAS, it greatly helped, one of my daughters, so thank you for putting that on for them, and thank you for recognizing that there are children in the seventh grade who do need additional challenges, and they put together a seventh grade seminar that is challenging students who are performing on a higher academic scale, and giving them an opportunity to grow and improve, so thank you at ARMS for doing that.
Carla?
Nothing.
Nancy?
I'm on some.
Okay. Mitch, with you, were the letters informational, just for the committee members?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy?
As far as the financial support letters, I know that they indicated that if any other school committee members want to write letters, we certainly could use that support for greater financing for education. And in terms of the, I can also report that in terms of the letter to send Gobi and to the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, as a result of our requests, they have filed a amendment asking for the additional $100,000 for that school-based healthcare assistance.
Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Let me move, you're second.
This side of the room.
Seeing there's no discussion on that motion, all those in favor?